Council Agenda, Township Parcypanee Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting of November 12th, 2024. Introduction, posting a notice. Adequate notice to this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 20th, 2023, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the New York Star-Ledger on December 26th, 2023. May I ask everyone to please rise for the flag salute?
(Inaudible)
Role call, Mr. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. McGrath?
Here.
Mr. Musella?
Here.
Mr. Neglia?
Here.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barberio, Business Administrator Jamie Crying, Township Attorney Michael Avery, Municipal Clerk Colette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum. May I begin?
Yes, please.
Okay, upcoming meetings, November 26th, 2024 at 7:00 PM is the regular meeting. December 3rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM is the agenda meeting. Ordinance and second reading, there are none at this time. Moving along to the public session, I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public session.
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Role call, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Floor is open to the public at this time. You have five minutes to speak on any matter. Please, prior to speaking, sign in. Thank you.
I have several things to bring up tonight. First, I'm looking to see if the town has posted the results of a 2023 audit on its website. I've been told that it's not happened. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
Uh, Mr. Council President, may I?
You want to wait till you start with all these questions?
Sure.
Okay. If it has not been posted, then, you know, when is it expected? Uh, second, as some of you know, I, uh, looked at the actions that the Highlands Council took recently to provide the towns with a GIS tool and training to help determine their fair share housing obligations. Uh, I found out today, finally, after a lot of effort, that the town indeed had received notice of this and that two people, Ed Snikus and Dustin Glass from San Marino and Barney, had both participated in the training. So, I was very happy to hear that. Parcypanee is on top of this. Um, we look forward to hearing their report in terms of whether, what, what kind of a, you know, how this could affect our fair share housing obligations. So, that could have been a whole issue, but it turned out, uh, people were on top of it. Uh, the third thing that I just wanted to bring up, uh, the previous meeting, we were informed that the redevelopment attorney had submitted applications requesting that the council start the process to determine the need for two, uh, for redevelopment on two lots, Fort Gate Hill Drive and Two Sylvan Way. Uh, my question is, do these applications provide any information on the planned usage for those sites? And if so, can we access this information? Second, is your understanding that if these sites are developed for non-residential applications, that this will likely reduce Parcypanee's fair share housing number because these properties were used in the calculations to determine the available land for fair share housing? If you want me to repeat that, I can do that.
I'd love it if you repeat that one. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, let's, can you answer my first question about the, the audit?
It's online. Yep. I'll send you a link.
Okay, very good. So, the two questions I had about that application was, one, was there anything in the application that would tell us what was planned for those sites?
No. Uh, the, there's, there's not full applications. I believe what we have is, um, and may I correct me if I'm wrong, we, I don't think we have full applications. With the resolutions, we had talked about, uh, what they want to do, and it was mainly about getting the escrow. Uh, it wasn't a financial agreement. It was about, um, allowing our professionals to, uh, do regular work for these potential applications and make sure that the town is not paying for them, that the applicant is, would be paying.
Right, right.
That's the, that's the main crux of it.
So, so there's no information on what they are planning to, you know, build a gym, um, open a library, create senior houses? There's no evidence as to what they're trying to do with those sites?
So, one of the things I, we want to probably hit on is, in the planning board, this then goes from there to the planning board, and the planning board, it's determined by the planning board, is this, should we look at this? If the planning board determines yes, it goes to the planner, the planner comes back with, hey, here's what I found, here's what's going on. So, we just did this, I want to say it was on 610 Lackawanna Avenue, so June 10th, we voted on moving Lackawanna Avenue to a redevelopment to see was it in need of redevelopment. That one was just in the last planning board. So, you can actually go back and watch it, listen to our planner talk about, here's why it does require redevelopment, there's mold, there's things going on, blah, blah, blah. So, that's kind of the next phase of this, Ken, is, is going to the planning board, and inside there, we talk about, is this worthy of, of a redevelopment or not?
Okay. So, the second question is maybe a little bit more hypothetical, but, uh, just my under, my own understanding of how things work, uh, if, if it's, if the plans for these locations are non-residential, you know, a gym, uh, a warehouse, anything non-residential, is it likely that this would reduce the fair share housing obligation numbers because those sites were probably included initially in whatever determination was made as potential, as far as potential sites for fair share housing?
I, yeah, I don't think it reduces, you know, because you're going to get that number. There will be less land to build those on, but it's not going to change, so, if I understand your question correctly is, like, look, if we went out and built, like, commercial uses on all the vacant land in Parcypanee, would that relieve us or reduce our number? The answer is no, uh, because you still have an obligation to build X number of units.
Yeah, I thought that obligation, though, was built to some extent on available area.
Correct, but, but think about what you're saying, right? So, if any town wanted to avoid doing that, what they would do is own all their remaining land conservation or such. And listen, I'm not justifying it, I have the same misgivings about the affordable housing landings, I'm just telling you what the law is.
Okay.
So, a lot of people have tried to do things similar to what you're talking about. So, you know, we'll see what the Highlands number comes back, because I think that number's going to be a lot more realistic than what the, uh, DCA initially came out with, so we'll see. Fingers crossed.
There you go. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
First I sign it, then I tell you who I am, right?
Yes. And all you got to do is just state your name, nothing else.
Okay. My name is Dorothy Allerin. No, he didn't sign. I'm a child, I'm a child.
Who didn't sign?
Ken.
Hey, Ken, you never signed.
I did.
You sure?
Well, I put it in the first box.
Where it says name, print, signature?
You can't, three-meeting speaking penalty. Rattling you out.
My name is Dorothy Allerin, and the reason I'm here today is certain things have been happening. I live on Fox Hill Road. Um, the town refused to, um, participate in the discussions on these virtuals with, where only Denville was talking about the Awk Weiss, um, fiasco where they wanted to build on the wetlands. It affected the people on the outskirts of Parcypanee. Fox Hill Road residents were affected as well as, I don't know if that's Fox Run, Fox, whatever it is, up that way. And I went to some of the virtuals, it was very disconcerting. At one point, even, um, the mayor, Andy, near the end, said, um, maybe Parcypanee should be involved in this, um, this, they have some land in Parcypanee that Awk Weiss wants to build this fiasco. Uh, metal stamping, um, medical situation which would affect Fox Hill and the, um, other boundaries. So, the Parcypanee residents who were, um, involved in listening to these virtuals during COVID, we got together and we typed a little, I typed a little letter and brought it down to the town. You were not involved at that point, it was Soriani, I think. And I hand-delivered it saying, here's the group of us, we would like you to participate, we're going to be negatively affected, we need your support. Till today, I, I'd even called, I think, I don't know if her name was Joan, the secretary, whatever it was, she's very nice. I said, did he get that? Yeah, he got it. And we got it. I think it's something like a nut, a bolt, and what's that other one that you do? Oh, yeah. You all know which one it is, right? Nothing. No representation by the town of Parcypanee. Horrible things happened, Parcypanee did nada. Um, recently, Mr. Justin Musella, you know, came over, talked to us, helped a little bit, um, but Parcypanee did nothing. So now, I happen to, after this, I realized myself, I said, you know, I never noticed that eight-ton sign on Fox Hill Road as you enter from Route 46. I think I noticed it right around the time that they were doing this Awk Weiss building and whatever. So, I've lived here, I, I'm even older than I look, but I've been here over 50 years as a, a property owner. And when I moved into Fox Hill Road, it was Rainbow Lakes up at the top, it was a beautiful little place, a community. Then I see, um, recently, there's an eight-ton sign as you enter Fox Hill Road. Eight tons, and I'm thinking to myself, how much is eight tons? Let me see, I've been out of grammar school, hmm, 50, 60 years, hmm, possibly 70, um, not 70, 50, we'll leave it at that. Anyway, I look it up, and I see that's a very large vehicle, eight tons, it's, uh, 16,000 pounds. And I'm wondering, why did Parcypanee decide, which I didn't, never noticed the sign till last year, to let that large of a truck, have to be a truck, go down our street? If you know Fox Hill Road, you attempted to do a little widening, but not much, because there wasn't much to play with on the road. It's up and downhill, it's around, um, there aren't sidewalks except for about four or five little tiny sections where there's maybe one block. It's narrow. If you let an eight-ton truck go down that street, which for some reason, I connect this with this Awk Weiss stuff, because Fox Hill Road-
Thirty seconds.
-goes to 46th and 53, it's a shortcut for these work vehicles. Why are you doing this to us? There's a firehouse with a 20,000 to 40,000 pound truck, safety issues. You got Wawa, you got the gas station, you got all the stuff that you've added on, school at the end, gas station, Wawa, no sidewalks, narrow streets, winding roads, up and downhills, kids and baby carriages-
Ma'am, time, time's up, ma'am.
...and two other streets intersecting. We are in a terrible situation, and this is not fair. It's just not fair. It's taking advantage of helpless taxpayers, ruining their environment, ruining-
Oh, we have to cut you off, I apologize.
Right.
Because everybody gets, everybody gets the same amount of time, I do apologize. If there's anything else you'd like to say, you could tell them after the meeting. I do apologize, ma'am.
I, you don't have to apologize, I know the rules. You'll get yours when I get mine.
Snake down that floor?
I think the eight-ton, I think the eight-ton sign, if you put that up in the nose, wouldn't want the eight-ton sign better requested, ma'am. Because they're terrible, and then, uh, trying to cut you off.
Good evening. Um, I live on Fox Chase Road, which is off of Fox Hill Road, and the Awk Weiss construction, which is a metal stamping come warehousing, has been trying to build on those wetlands since 1992. I have papers here to show you that they've been trying. The EPA of New Jersey put a stop to it in 92. The Denville, more, 90, 97% of the property is in Denville, but there is, uh, a little bit that is, is Parcypanee. They decided to have cut all the trees of, from the wetland, they have built to the point where we have no security, we have no privacy, we have noise pollution, light pollution, and once that, the construction fence there comes down, there's going to be people from Luger Road walking through our backyards, there's, there's a safety issue there, and we already have people throwing trash over this construction fence onto our property. We see people taking their bio breaks facing us, and it, it is, it is beyond ridiculous. We had a, a letter signed and sent to, and sent to the mayor in Parcypanee, there was no response, no interest. When Mayor Barberio came into the picture, we did the same thing again with that same letter, saying that we have had nobody come to our aid, there was no interest. Because we were not, we are not Denville residents, we were not represented by Denville, we were not supported by, uh, Parcypanee, we are almost like taxpayers who don't count. Our property values have gone down, our, we, we are at severe risk of having all kinds of issues happening, the wetlands have been, uh, decimated completely there, there have been studies that were done earlier, which, which we tried to pull up and, and tell them about flooding and, and, you know, water pollution that's going to happen, didn't make a difference, did not make a difference because they did it with virtual meetings during COVID and they passed it. Well, Justin happened to, uh, meet us, uh, at, at a, at a, at a gathering, and he showed some interest in helping us, and the way he helped us was to get us, uh, discounted, uh, trees and landscaping people to come and plant four maples on our property. Now, the property length goes probably like 300 yards, from, you know, from one end to another, if not more. Four trees are going to do nothing, right? They'll, they'll, they'll give us some kind of a shield 15 years from now when they grow, but right now, zero. And when we keep asking for help, we don't understand why Parcypanee treats us like non-citizens. Yes, we are on the edge of Parcypanee, we are not in the center of Parcypanee, but we are still the Parcypanee taxpayers. What, I mean, are you going to give us a, some kind of a tax rebate because our property values have gone down? Heck, no, I don't think so, because if, if we were to petition for that, you'd say, no, 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 you're va, you were valued at this or that, get a lawyer. For everything, it's like, get a lawyer, like, we are all rolling with money to get lawyers. Anyway, I'm, I'm done. Thank you, Justin, for your help, much appreciated.
Yeah, my name is Amit Mitra. Uh, I live on 6 Fox Chase Drive, and, uh, I'll sign my name, and, and then, what do Uh, in 2008, I walked into that house, I walked through the house, and I looked at the woods at the back, and I said, this is going to be my home. I paid a premium for it, quite frankly. Uh, the, there were woods and wetland, uh, they were protected, there were, uh, no, wild turkey, fox cubs, even an occasional bear used to walk through our backyard. Uh, coyotes, it, it was beautiful, and I love nature, so I used to spend time there. Uh, we got a notice saying that the woods were going to be replaced by a warehouse and a metal stamping factory. So, we, uh, they, no, it had been denied before. Uh, the former mayor of Denville told me that he'd been approached and he'd denied it, but they were pushing for it, the present council and, Denville was pushing for it, nobody wanted it. People up and down, Denville residents, Parcypanee residents, we went to town halls, uh, it, no, no use. Uh, they finally, there, there was a, a report, uh, that, on flooding, on the damage that would be caused, but, done by the state and the feds, uh, they refused to enter it into the records in the town hall. But anyway, uh, that's past. Uh, they, they cut the trees down, their woods were totally decimated, the building of a factory there, the, our sec, we, we have no security, they cut the trees, every commercial establishment I've seen, uh, leaves a little line of trees between them, themselves and any residential areas, they cut the trees right down to my lawn in the backyard, there's nothing. And, uh, we approached, actually, uh, two of us, my other neighbor is not here, we came to Anne Marie. Uh, we, as described, our homes were shaking with the construction, my rafters were rattling, pictures were falling off walls, his chimney cracked. We came to Anne Marie and we said, this is what's happening. We, we had approached the Tom Andy, Tom Andy said, go get a lawyer. So, we came to you, because you are supposed to protect our interests, we pay a lot in taxes. I can tell you that I pay a shitload in taxes, and I'm getting nothing. And, and then, uh, nothing happened, uh, and, like she said, all the bad things are happening, light pollution, no security, uh, where there were woods, we have a monstrosity at the back. Justin was the only person who took an interest out of the whole town, he helped us plant some trees, hopefully they will provide some screening, but our problems are still not solved. I mean, all, the problem of security, uh, the pro, our homes have been devalued, uh, you know, are you going to take less taxes from us for that? Uh, what have we, my, I would have never bought that home if I knew I'd have a factory in my backyard. So, I'd like to know, I, you know, I'd like to be represented, I'm a taxpayer, I think I deserve that. So, that's all I have to say.
And thanks to Justin for, uh, taking an interest, and at this late stage, there's not much more we could do but to help us, to screen some of that factory out.
Thank you, Amit, and, and I truly wish I knew sooner and I could have done more.
I, I'd like to respond to Mr. Mitra, if I may, Council President, with regards to being ignored by the township, which is false, which isn't true at all. Um, you were sent an email with regards to, we've been talking with multiple people in our own construction and zoning department regarding a distressor issue, to see how it would be handled had the construction been taken place within our own township. And we've, we've sent our own, um, construction individuals down there to monitor it and all that kind of stuff with regards to that area. So, when the, you know, I read in the, in these areas that nobody, we were ignored, you weren't ignored, who was sent down to our construction department, and like Dorothy said, it's not in our purview. This is not township property, this is Denville's property. And although I agree with you with regards to taking the trees down, uh, if there was a follow-up and, you know, after you got an email from us, I see most of your correspondence were with, um, Mayor Andy. I will speak to An, Mayor Andy tomorrow, I will definitely speak with him with regards, um, see if we can replace trees. First and foremost, I know you had the, um, follow-up with the trees being placed in there, I don't know if it's township property or is it your property, those trees? Okay, so it's being, is it, okay, then that's fine, if it's your property with regards to that. So, I'll ask, uh, Mayor Andy, because I don't know who's doing the construction on that site, and if they can put a buffer in, that's even a lot better than what you have right now, with regards to those trees that were put in there. Uh, and I'm only saying that it's, I'm glad it's on your property, because you can't plant trees on town property, because we have, uh, Parks and Forest Department, and we, we plant certain types of trees in certain areas, and there's a reason for that. Uh, so, that being said, but I will speak to Andy, uh, the mayor tomorrow, to see if there's anything we can further do to create the buffer that you really would want and, uh, the individuals on, uh, Fox Chase Road.
I, I would appreciate that, and, uh, we've never got a follow-up, I, I said something-
No, I'm just saying, I, I saw it on the thing, you know, we plant a lot of trees, I don't go take pictures in front of them, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
May I ask, Mr. Barberio?
All right, there's no-
Yeah. Sorry.
And, and listen, we can talk offline, um, you want to set up an appointment in my office , Dorothy, and, and, you know, Mr. Mitra, and you as well, ma'am, um, with regards to that, because, um, what I don't really want to happen is just become a political issue, because it seems that's what happens down during that time. But I will tell you this, I will definitely reach out to the mayor of Denville when I speak with him, in regards to see if we can get that buffer the way it is. I'll also have our Parks and Forest Department Director look at the area as well, have him come monitor it and see what type of trees we can put there, if that buffer is our property. I don't know if it's our property or Denville's property. Obviously, if it's on your, if it's on your property, we have a right of way that we could probably plant trees there as well.
May I please request, if we have one thing, since you've been to talk to the mayor tomorrow?
We, ma'am, you could, you could talk to the ma, if you want to talk to the mayor offline, he'll talk to you over there, individually.
Yeah, what I would, in response to that, I mean, I've already spoken to Mayor Andy's, um, and, uh, what he, uh, will do for the residents is make sure that any tree that dies on Awk Weiss's property will be replaced, but additionally, Mayor Andy's requested that, um, the, the chain-lick fence that they put up during the construct, construction, uh, will stay in place. So, you know, this, um, I know that it's, it's not a lot, but at least we were able to do that for you. Um, so I've already had that conversation with Mayor Andy, so I think that would be redundant to have another one.
Well, I, I will say this, um, coming from the mayor, it will have a lot more, um, to be totally honest with you, sir.
Yeah, but you, you didn't have it with them when they-
I'm going to have it with them, so, just to explain that, so.
Council President, could I add something?
Yeah, go ahead, sure, go ahead.
Um, I, Mayor Andy's has done this with other properties in the past as well, so in good faith, I'm hoping that when Parcypanee talks with them, that maybe benefit is their property, that they put in a buffer, it's happened, you know, going Mount Commons, the same thing, you go right up to the line, and I've tried to investigate, they're a commission, they're an environmental commission, and there's no transparency in finding how these things were voted on, so I think a conversation between the two towns is, is good.
Yeah. Good point.
Hi, um, my name is Anita Shotwell, I'm the Managing Trustee of Wildlife Preserves, which is a private nonprofit land preservation organization with our most active sanctuary, the Troy Meadows Preserve here in Parcypanee. In reviewing the recording of the October 22nd Township Council meeting, I was disheartened to hear Mayor Barberio raise the issue of possible litigation with Wildlife Preserves. I subsequently learned that this relates to a Parcypanee sewer line that was installed on Wildlife Preserve's Troy Meadows property more than 50 years ago, with some unresolved easement and access issues. For the record, Wildlife has been in contact with Parcypanee Sewer Utility since 2020, consistently expressing our willingness to support and cooperate with the township.
For a fee?
I'm sorry?
For a large fee, well, I'll, I'll let Avery.
Yeah, let her-
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, we would like to point out that while Wildlife Preserves is not to blame for the current access issues, it also does not appear to be the fault of the current mayor or council. It seems that some issues may have been unresolved 50 years ago, and we thank the mayor and council for working to resolve this longstanding concern rather than kicking the can down the, the line to become someone else's problem. Our respective legal council are now in communication, and we are hopeful that we can find some resolution working together. As most of the council is aware, Wildlife Preserves is the township's largest private landowner, and we are stewards of the Troy Meadow Preserve with more than 1,500 acres in Parcypanee and several hundred in East Hanover. This preserve was cobbled together starting in 1951, using private funds to purchase and maintain open space and marshland- using private funds to purchase and maintain open space and marshland, including several housing subdivisions that were saved from development and preserved as open space. While Troy Meadows has enjoyed a loyal constituency of bird watchers and naturalists, it has remained somewhat of a hidden jewel because of Wildlife's focus on the flora and fauna and passive recreational youth. Over the last 10 years, Wildlife Preserves has expanded its outreach with members of the community, many of whom have been surprised to learn about this treasure in their backyards. Each year, we are meeting more neighbors who would visit and share our desire to protect the wildlife habitat and incredible biodiversity right here in Parsippany. We have enjoyed meeting hundreds of guests at our Firefly and Moth Night. And we've had the honor of working with rectors, the Parsippany Environmental Advisory Committee, and the Parsippany Green Team on our popular batwalks and educational research. This year, Wildlife hosted our first block party open house at Troy Meadows. And we had the great pleasure of participating at the Parsippany Fall Fest, handing out seeds and Troy Meadows Preserve maps. We hope to introduce a trail map by the end of the year. Wildlife is also finalizing plans for an environmental education center, hoping to break ground in 2025. The environmental center will serve as a gateway to the Troy Meadows Preserve and provide better facilities and access to Parsippany residents at no cost to taxpayers and in accordance with the goals of Parsippany's 2020 master plan to develop an environmental center, improve trails, and improve public access. As a charitable organization whose lands and programs are of great value and benefit to the residents of Parsippany and neighboring communities, Wildlife asks the council and mayor to consider all possible avenues to resolve the current sewer line issues. We are hopeful that a solution can be found which will minimize unnecessary legal fees for both parties, which in our case takes away from funding that can be spent on future public programs and facilities. Wildlife stands ready to work with the mayor and council. We are happy to meet at any time, not for a fee, for discussion and to build a more positive relationship with the township of Parsippany. Thank you.
Oh yeah, Council, can you respond to the question for me? Before you respond, I know you're a little upset and that's okay, but I have to make it known that there's possible litigation. That's my obligation to the council as well. Okay, so all the wonderful things you do, that doesn't, that doesn't change any of that for the town and vice versa. But if there's going to be possible litigation, then I, I think I'm obligated to say something. It wasn't against Wildlife Preserve itself, but something has to be resolved before we can move forward. So I'm gonna let our township attorney respond.
Yeah, so I, I don't want to litigate this in the public, but the mayor made that comment based on advice that I had given him because what had happened was there's a project that our sewer utility wants to do with regard to this sewer line, which has been there since the 60s, I think 1967. So we had title work done. Title work had been done by the previous township attorney. We found that the easement is recorded on all the properties on either side of two lots owned by Wildlife Preserves. There's also a lis pendens that was filed in Morris County Court. Unfortunately, they don't retain the records. So there was a lis pendens filed showing that there was litigation to, I guess, condemn that section of the sewer line. But that, they destroyed the records for whatever reason. They don't have them anymore. So what, what happened was Wildlife Preserves actually started this because Mr. Faella, I think is your executive director or the president, wrote a letter to our sewer utility that said, just to take a look at whether or not we have a sewer easement, they were going to charge 15,000 or 50,000. Well, I have the letter, so I'll be happy to provide it to you. It's a public record. They also said that for an easement like this, that it was going to cost somewhere between 750,000 and I think a million two. And again, this is all, that may not be true, but that is in the letter that Wildlife Preserve sent to the town. That's absolutely true. No, 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 it wasn't. It was these lots and blocks. So we actually, I actually checked with the, because I couldn't believe that there's any way that this existed because I checked with Algonquin, the Algonquin Gas Line Company. They knew about our easement. They could see that it was plainly visible. There's manholes there, there's everything else. So they said, we've known about your easement forever. Now, I could probably get their documents, but you'd have to find, you know, they weren't going to give them to me willingly. So then we find that in 2020 or 20, recently Wildlife Preserves filed for, I guess you're, there was going to be a center there. And they delineated the sewer easement through those two lots that are the subject of our discussion. So they can't say that they, I mean, they filed the land use application that showed that the sewer line's there. So I contacted, you're, actually, the attorney for Wildlife Preserve called me because somebody after the meeting said, oh, there might be some litigation. And I said, well, yeah, that's right, because we got this letter from your, again, I don't remember the gentleman's title, but it said that just to talk to you guys about this was going to cost us $15,000. So I said, if they're going to hang you up for 750 to 1.2 million dollars, you're not going to have much of a choice if that's the position they take. So I sent a letter to your council and then he just responded back. So hopefully we can resolve it, but it's, I mean, nobody wants to end up in litigation. But the fact of the matter is, that's a massive sewer main that serves the residents of Parsippany. It's been there since the 60s. There's, from the documents that I've reviewed, it's clear that we've had that and it's clear that Wildlife knew about it. And again, Wildlife filed an application for subdivision, sub-division recycling, it doesn't matter, that delineated the very easement. So they know, they knew it was there. And, and again, there might be some confusion because we wanted to do some work in that. I'm hoping that turns out to be the case. But at the time, you know, it was just that, oh, no, we're not even going to talk to you about it. And this is what you're going to pay us to do that. And if in fact, we do talk to you, you're going to end up paying us a million dollars for that easement that we already have. We can't, we can't have any back and forth, ma'am, I'm sorry.
If I can ask some questions, Town Attorney Lavery, we.
Well, first of all, I don't want to, you can ask the questions, but if we do end up in litigation and this doesn't get worked out because it's, we, the sewer line's been there for 60 years, so.
It's a very simple, a very simple question. Can we just arrange a meeting? Councilwoman Hernandez and I met with Anita and Len for a tour. They were very gracious, very accommodating and willing to work with the township. Can we just meet with them and sit down?
Well, like I said, their attorney just responded. So hopefully the facts are as they are represented and then maybe we can resolve it. But at this point, I, I don't want to say too much in the public comment.
Council President, if, if I may, Council, I, I think this is definitely, definitely best handled by the lawyers. And that's the way that the organization set this up. There's really no choice but to have the lawyers handle this. It's, it's, I mean, astronomical fees to fix sewer pipes. It, it blows my mind, but I think it's best to have the lawyers handle this. Really, and not even talk about it because it's, it doesn't serve any, anybody. It, there's no need to embarrass Wildlife Preserve. There's no need to litigate something in public. I think it's best if we just have the conversation offline between the lawyers and hopefully come to a nice, easy resolution.
And if I may add, I was contacted, but I, I, I made the statement that if there's possible litigation, that I will not meet with anybody when possible litigation.
My name is Jack Ray. I'm a member of the Parsippany Troy Old Board of Education. These comments are in my capacity as a private citizen and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Parsippany Board of Education. In the September 10th Town Council meeting, a vote was taken to hire De Maria and De Maria to audit the Board of Education. The vote to hire then passed three to two. Some questions. What is the current status of the audit? Was an engagement letter sent by the firm, agreed to and signed by the firm and the town? Was the scope of the engagement provided in the engagement letter? What was the written scope of the engagement? At that Town Council meeting, the implied audit scope was changed to the demographic forecast. Can the public receive a copy of the engagement letter? Has the engagement started? Has any work been performed? Who has been contacted to commence the audit? Was the fee agreed to at 17,500? Has it subsequently changed? Has the accounting firm been paid its fee or any portion of its fee? If it was so important prior to the agreement between the town and the Board of Education, why isn't it a priority after the announcement of the agreement? The entire episode was disconcerting because it was a slander of the administration. The redundant audit implied wrongdoing, but there was no, but there was no indications through analytical review of any wrongdoing. The Board of Education met its filing deadline of December 12, 2023 with an unqualified opinion on its audit with no internal control weaknesses indicated. That December deadline has subsequently been moved to January, starting this year because 75% of the towns in the state could not meet the deadline. That is a testament to the Parsippany School District Administration. On a separate note, State Senator Panaccio has been a long time critic of pilots. In an interview from 2011, he referred to a 2010 report by New Jersey State Comptroller Matthew Boxer titled, "A Programmatic Examination of Municipal Tax Abatements." Sounds like a, a quick reader. But here are some highlights from the executive summary of the report. Payments to municipalities by businesses and developers in lieu of taxes known as pilot payments distort municipal incentives in using and structuring abatements at the expense of counties, school districts, and other taxpayers. Information concerning abatement agreements is not published in a transparent manner or centralized location, making it difficult to impossible for the public to compare, calculate the effect of, or be fully aware of those agreements. Directly affected stakeholders are not involved adequately in the abatement decision-making process. Redevelopment areas in which abatements may be granted typically are not periodically reviewed to account for neighborhood changes or improvements. Tax abatements, and this is still from the report, should be used carefully and sparingly given the multitude of pitfalls, their far-reaching impact, and the reality that exemption from taxation is a departure from the normal allocation of tax obligations. We, meaning the New Jersey Comptroller's Office, recommend county, school district, and the public should assume greater roles in the abatement process. Pilot arrangements should be structured in a way that encompasses the interests of counties and school districts. A thorough cost-benefit analysis of community impact should be undertaken before awarding a tax abatement. From reading this and given our experience over the last year, it looks like no reforms have been implemented in the last 14 years. In fairness, these tax abatements did not foresee the COVID pandemic and a resulting change to corporate office needs. However, I welcome, I welcome you to discuss tonight any reforms that have been implemented that which the public may not be aware of. Thank you.
If, if I can just, I'll respond and I'll respond later in my report. First of all, any type of amendments to these, the pilot comes from the legislators. They don't come from the township. This is legislation that was passed by the state. I forget when, with, with time and on whatever. So, and, and when you bring that up with regards, what's the town doing? The town doesn't legislate the state government. The state government legislates. Your assembly legislates. Your state senators legislate. Your state senators had many opportunities and your state led, uh, some, many opportunities that changed the process. So you're going to have to petition your state legislators, District 26 legislators, since you brought Mr. Panaccio up, Senator Panaccio, Jay Weber is someone, and Brian Bergen is someone. Those are the ones that can make the difference and change in the legislation. I agree with you. Would probably make things a lot easier. But the bottom line is that the town doesn't, doesn't legislate that.
Mayor, what about the most important point you brought up? What is the status of your audit of the Board of Education?
Well, I don't know how that's the most important, but I'll say this. The status is, it's still being reviewed. And when you, when you mentioned 17,500, now, Jack, I don't know if you know how the procurement process works. I don't know if you know that, there's a, yeah, I know you come up and you spout all these numbers, but there's a procurement process and there's a way things that work during the pure procurement. We have to pass resolutions when we hire individuals. So when we hire somebody, it's up to 17,500 because you make it sound like we spent 17,500. That's, I don't know what we spent yet. I spoke to the auditor today, I'm going to find out. But you may, that's, it might not even be nowhere near that. And if you, you did an audit and you're confident in your audit, then there's nothing really to worry about.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Suarez, resident of Parsippany. Before I speak about what I wanted to speak about, I find it strange that council members who are part-time had the time to reach out to the mayor of Denville and find out what was going on with, with the property of, of these people. And yet we have a full-time mayor who didn't re, reach out to him yet. I mean, these people are, are part-time. The mayor, in theory, is, is. So my question is, why did the part-time people have time to do it and our full-time mayor didn't? Now for what I wanted to speak about. We recently had a, a Halloween festival and there was a banner across it that said, Mayor Bart Barberio's Pumpkin Patch. My question is, did the mayor pay, pay for that sign or did the city pay for that sign? That's obviously, obviously a, a subliminal message telling people that the mayor did, did this in anticipation of his run for reelection. So my question is, and I do expect an answer, who paid for it and how much was it? Now we get to the pilot issue, which is an ongoing fiasco. Once again, Mayor Barberio is moving forward with plans to grant more pilot programs in Parsippany. As usual, he is short on details. I guess John Inglesino didn't tell him what he had to say yet. Inglesino is the puppet master in this town. We all know it. During the last election, Mayor Barberio's name was on the ballot. But in truth be told, someone else is pulling the strings. During Barberio's previous term in office, he lost the election because of his friendship with John Inglesino. Whatever John wanted was good enough for Mayor Barberio. The mayor often claims how he was born and raised in Parsippany and how much he loves the town. He certainly has an odd way of showing it. He consistently goes against the overwhelming majority of the public on most issues, such as pilots, school funding, and the replacement or renovation of the Lake Hiawatha Library, just to name three. We must also remember, this would not be possible without the help of the Town Council, which is merely a rubber stamp for whatever co-mayors Barberio and Inglesino want. Two of Barberio's loyal council members did not run in the last election. One of them was replaced by someone who will not follow the mayor blindly, AKA Councilwoman Judy Hernandez. Come the next election, the residents of Parsippany must complete the job and elect a new mayor and replace council members that have been loyal to Mr. Bart Barberio and not doing the job that they were sent to do, which is represent the citizens of Parsippany. Now I'd like to know, A, who, who paid for, for, for the banner? B, if the city paid for it, why wasn't it just called the Parsippany Pumpkin Patch? Why did the mayor's name have to be attached to it? Pardon me?
30 seconds.
Thank you. And lastly, do we have an update on what, if anything, the DOT is doing regarding the intersections where we've had numerous people lose their lives in the last year? Thank you.
Council President, I can, I can answer some of those questions. First of all, I, I think that having a sign that says Mayor Barberio. First of all, I think that having a sign that says "Mayor Barberio's Pumpkin Patch" is quite normal and quite regular, and I think that it's less political than your statement there. Your statement is very more political than having a sign for the mayor who's a sitting mayor. You know, if there was something that said "Re-elect" or "Re-elect" or something like that, that makes it political. Otherwise, it's within the bounds of, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Back and forth, sir.
Excuse me. It's within the bounds of accepted and normal actions in any municipality. As far as the DOT goes, they're ongoing. You see them working on some of the intersections now, and they're continuing to do that. And we've met with them, they came up, the commissioner came up, and they're gonna be dedicated to doing their best to fixing some of these issues on their roads, and we appreciate that from them. And I think that's about it.
Yeah, and then with regards to the Lake Hiawatha Library, I know you keep coming up here, Mr. Suarez, with regards to, but we visited the Lake Hiawatha Library, and I made a recommendation to the council. I wouldn't put a nickel into it right now. It is in bad shape. It's in really, really bad shape, and I, we have about six million dollars total, I think, three million from the, they get funding, we have three million. We'd be putting money into something that needs a lot more than six million. So, we made some recommendations through the library and possibly to see if there's property that we have, of course, in Lake Hiawatha, because you wanna keep calling it the Lake Hiawatha Library, that possibly it might be actually more efficient, financially more sound to build a new one. Because this one, when I went in there, it was, and the director and I, you know, I said, "I get it now." It was in bad shape. Nineteen forty-eight it was built. There's, you're never gonna have enough parking over there, ever, and the fact of the matter is that it's the whole entire building. I mean, from mold to you name it. I mean, they say there's no mold there, but when I went down there, I could smell. So, that was the recommendation we made, and we're looking at properties in the Lake Hiawatha area that we own, that we could possibly like Lake Hiawatha Library there.
We're not gonna have any.
If you want to place banners, you could do like any other resident, but you gotta put an Oprah request in. Because I don't know the price, but you're gonna have to, and I'll save you a pumpkin. I'll make sure I get you one.
Good evening, everybody. Punith Agarwal, I'm the resident of Glenmont Commons. Some of my friends have been here for the last few months, so I'm looking for three things, an update. One is, is the update on the lawsuit that was filed against the builder? The second is, the engineer was, I think, assigned to look at the cross-section between Oldover and Mountain Way? And third one is, is there any update on repairing the Mountain Way section which leads into the Denville? The road conditions are horrible. We have been coming for quite some time. I really hope that we get some positive update from all of you. Thank you.
Yeah, so, the, as you know, the, well, you may not know, your friends probably told you that we had filed a complaint against the developer. The developer filed an answer and a third-party claim against the homeowners association, so now the homeowners association is involved. The homeowners association has not answered yet, but I'm sure they'll be answering shortly. They may name other parties in that lawsuit. I don't know, you know, I don't represent them, so I don't know. So, I would think that, you know, shortly we'll have everybody into the litigation that needs to be there, and then we'll go from there. Then it starts a discovery process, and then, you know, maybe we can get into mediation or arbitration and see if we can resolve it early on. That would be a good thing, but right now, everybody hasn't answered, so.
What about the single time unit? There are nothing really to add to it?
Well, again, this is in litigation, so I could talk to you afterwards, but the problem is, there was a case about ten years ago that says that even if you're not in the HOA, if you're getting a benefit from the roads, and again, I think the developer has some responsibility, the HOA has some responsibility, one or both of those may have full responsibility, but that's gonna be determined by the court. So, and then, on Mountain Way, I did email Justin Lizza, the engineer, about that, because there were some complaints about it, and I guess there is work that's being done there. And I can give you a copy of this email that Justin Lizza sent back to me, so there is work that is going to be done there. Mike highlighted the Mountain Way improvement area, because on the last agenda, the council had approved a contract for improvements there. So, the township engineer sent me an email with a copy of the picture of where that work's gonna be done, and I don't mind giving you this after the meeting, so you can just take a look at it.
Okay, seeing no other member? No, I'm sorry, I apologize, I did not see you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Roderick, County Community Manager with District Two, kind of where actually where my neighbor is, right here. I was made aware that there is a zoning board position available. I have placed an application with, you know, I've sent it to every member of the council, also to the town clerk, just seeing if there's, you know, been any thought about it or any resolution.
So, your application, like all other applications, were distributed amongst the governing body and will be considered and discussed among them, and then once a decision is made, they'll go ahead and vote on whichever member they decide.
Should be on the next meetings again.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, I think John's experience, his background will add a lot to the Board of Adjustment, so I strongly support his application.
Any other member of the public? Okay, seeing no one, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public session.
Make a motion.
Second? Motion made by Mr. Micala, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Micala?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Garifee?
Yes.
The floor is closed. You guys can, we should be done shortly, and you can address the governing body right after. Okay, soon as we're done, we should be finished very shortly, and you can just address it to them. I apologize. So, I'd ask the governing members and the administration to quickly review the consent agenda to be voted on at the next meeting, seeing that there are no questions from the governing body or the administration moving along to the approval of minutes also to be approved on at the next meeting. Moving along to the presentations and reports at this time. Mayor?
Thank you. Go ahead. So, on Saturday, November 2nd, I was, I welcomed La Poncha, if I'm saying it right, La Poncha Latin Restaurant to our community with a vibrant ribbon-cutting ceremony. I have to tell you, this jam, it was delightful. I had breakfast, drank coffee there, and I know most, some of the council members there as well, and it's nice to have them in town. They're located at 34 North Pepperd Road. They're open Monday to Thursday from 6:30 to 2:00 p.m. And let's show our support. November 4th, I was joined by the Parsippany Township Department Heads and member of the Parsippany Police Department, the coffee with the mayor. I'm sorry I put mayor on there, but I am the mayor, for St. Peter's Golden Age Club Meeting, and they were providing an opportunity to engage in a question-and-answer session with myself and township employees, and it went very well. We stated a lot of facts to them, a lot of things that are happening in town. They asked a lot of great questions with regards to roadways, pilots, all that, and they were answered in a fair manner and was very receptive. On November 8th, I had the privilege of attending the senior prom at the Parsippany Senior Community Center, where I had the delightful task of crowning Vicki Rice and peeling the recipe as the prom queen and king. The atmosphere was lively, and the seniors really enjoyed every moment of it. It was actually great. Also, on Friday, November 8th, I graciously received a $2,000 contribution from the Parsippany Food Pantry from the Els Lodge 2078. The donation was presented by Exalter Willy Joe Suraquia, along with members Bill Camarco, Kim Percelli, and Sean Rice. Also, our council vice president Frank Neglia with me, because he's also a member of the Els Lodge. Yesterday was a special occasion for all Americans to pay tribute to our veterans, both who have served in the past and those who are currently in service. And I say this all part of what I'm about to say. This year, I want to take a moment to remember a remarkable veteran, my father Gregory Michael Barbero. He bravely fought in World War II in the Army. He made significant sacrifices that have shaped the life I lead today, and many individuals do today because of our armed forces. Also, following that, I went to All Saints Academy to commemorate Veterans Day with a heartfelt ceremony celebrating local heroes. And like I said, as a son of a World War II veteran who served in the Army, I am sincerely grateful to All Saints Academy and its students for acknowledging the sacrifices made by military men and women, pilots. So, I have had several opportunities to meet with the Board of Education President, Andy Chaffo, with regards to the pilots, and we've had some really, really great discussions. And all you're ever gonna hear from some of the board members who come up here and say, "I'm here as a resident, not a Board of Education member," I can never say, "I'm here as a resident, not as the mayor." You're either elected official 24/7 or you're not. Your views are your views, and there's nothing wrong with having views, even if you're an elected official. When it comes to education, funding for educational pilots, so, the revenues generated from pilot agreements can be allocated in various educational programs, salary improvements, and resources that schools need to enhance the quality of education. This can include funding for technology, extracurricular activities, and infrastructure upgrades. Now, when we met with the school board, Superintendent Bob Sutter and Andy Chaffo and myself and Jamie Cryin, we went out through the school, and we saw a lot of things that possibly the town can help them out when it comes to our pilots. I also want to make it clear that these pilots aren't gonna be on board for maybe three to five years. There's a whole process that goes on when you get a pilot, and the final process is getting the CO. And once you get the certificate of, you know, occupancy, that's when the pilots kick in. So, it's gonna be a long plan, you know, term, and we're gonna really work things out. I feel very confident working with Andy. They've been actually great, and, you know, we just went through the schools, and I have to tell you, there's a lot of situations in our schools that have to be addressed. There's no doubt about it. And if the township can help out in any way, we want to do that. So, that being said, Council President, that's all I have to say today. Oh, I do want to say this, I'm sorry. I'm scrolling, because this is important, because as you know, Baldwin Road Repair Update, Baldwin Road Silver Project is finally complete. So, if you go on Baldwin Road, you have a nice blue road, you have very nice lines, all painted, and so, I want to thank, you know, our superintendent of state, who's been very patient, and all of us are trying to be as patient as we can with regards to that. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Councilor Council?
I just have one thing. I was glad to see that the Highlands Council reported that you guys did the Open Space and Trails Report. Yay. Giving some money for Highlands Conformance, so thank you.
Yeah. For my report, I'm glad that Revolution NJ is on here, Resolution Number 11. We have some members of our Historic Advisory Committee, so kudos to them for, you know, their hard work and keeping that moving forward. You know, one of the items that did come up, it's been a persistent issue, is the matter of the Condit House. I understand that Hunting Ridge owns the property that the building is located, but it is designated as a historical site, and, you know, I think, and in an update on where things stand, I understand there was maybe some conversations a while ago between the HOA and us, but would like to bring that to the top of the list. I would like to thank all of the, you know, people, our neighbors in Pudding Stone that welcomed Courtney and I into the community. People brought us chocolates, brownies, cookies, and, you know, we're really excited to set up shop there, and maybe by the next council meeting, you know, our son will be here. So, definitely, you know, some really exciting personal news. And then I also want to thank, you know, Serbo and Wall Landscaping for coming together and helping the residents of Fox Hill and Fox Chase in light of the circumstances that they experienced with their development. And I did go on a visit with Councilwoman Hernandez of Troy Meadows. I'm gonna park aside the talk between the lawyers, but it was a good visit. I saw how the town could potentially help with respect to paving Troy Meadows Road, road that we own, and also maybe investigating a trash net, which is a very small expense, but it could capture a lot of the plastics, pollutants that go into the meadow that we all drink. So, that's my report, and also, you know, Happy Veterans Day. I thought the town did a great ceremony yesterday honoring all of our veterans.
Any other member of council? A township attorney?
Yeah, the only thing I have, Council President, is that, as you know, Glenmont Commons developers had sued the township because we denied, they had submitted an Oprah request for a copy of a sewer report that the township commissioned to see if our sewer utility would be able to handle additional waste that was gonna come from a proposed development in Denville. As that was pre-decisional, the Oprah request was denied, Glenmont Commons sued, we won. Glenmont Commons then filed a motion for reconsideration with the judge, and the judge ruled in our favor again. So, hopefully that is the end of that. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Labrie. Business Administrator?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council Mayor. Just a couple of things, but first I want to congratulate and thank all the residents who got out and voted last Tuesday and did their civic duty. Whether you're happy or unhappy with the results, it's great to have a day where your voice is heard, and for us, it was a great opportunity because it went off with that incident and everything with Status Call here. And thank you to the Clerk's Office, Colette and your team, for putting the work in, starting before the sun rose and finishing right before the next sun rose. It's a long day for you guys, and we really appreciate all the hard work that you did. The 2024 Municipal Best Practices Inventory is in, has been submitted, and so each year, the local government services requires all municipalities to answer serious questions regarding local government practices. The inventory evaluates a municipality's compliance with various laws and assesses the implementation of fiscal and operational best practices. Questions are designed to encourage municipalities to embrace practices that promote sound management, financial accountability, and transparency. Sixty-nine questions in a number of different categories. CFO Lenho and I dedicated a significant amount of time to this, to answering the questions, and we got a lot of support from department heads, and we appreciate that. We, so they have been submitted, we're in good shape. We achieved a score of forty point five out of forty-six point five, which is a good score, surpasses the threshold to ensure full state aid and performing better than, we performed better than recent years, so it was a good thing for us. We're very happy with that. Those, the questions and answers will be posted online in the next coming days. The NJDEP held a drought warning public hearing today that our water superintendent participated in, and this was in response to the unprecedented dry spell and declining water storage supplies order. The NJDEP held a drought warning public hearing this morning, which we took part in. While no emergency exists at this time in relation to the township's water supply, the NJDEP may begin urging the public to voluntarily use water sparingly and may order us to manage our supply if this situation continues, which it looks like it may. So, that's very important. So, this Water Superintendent, Mayor and I will be meeting on this in the coming days to see if there's any changes from the DEP, but it's really unprecedented times that you go a whole month without rain. It's really strange. So, please make sure you conserve water and be careful out there. No fireworks, no fires of any kind, and be as careful as you can. On the agenda is, up for your consideration is a resolution for a CFO appointment, authorizing the appointment of Angelica Savitini for Director of Finance in the CFO position. Very excited about this. We have done, we did an extensive search and received a large number of resumes, interviewed the best candidates that we thought, and Angelica really stood out from the pack. She'll be a great ask- She'll be a great asset to this town. She is, she's had her CMFO license since 2019. Currently, she's a tax collector, QPA, and CFO. She started in municipal government as an account clerk in a water department, so she worked her way up and has held just about every position possible, and I'm really excited for the possibility of working with her, and I think that you'll be excited as well. With that, I've had the opportunity for the last, you know, almost two years to work with Len Ho, our current CFO, and it's been a great opportunity to work with him. He was very dedicated, cared about his job, and cared about the residents, and took his role as the custodian of funds for the township of Parsippany very seriously. And we appreciate all that he has done and all that he will continue to do.
I'd like to add something to that. When I was the township administrator in Tewksbury, I was fortunate enough to work with Len, and I told Len, you know, if I become mayor of Parsippany again, I would love to have you on board. He took that role, and he did a great job in it, but he has different plans for his future. So I know how dedicated he is, how smart he is, how loyal he is to the township, but Angelica, when we interviewed Angelica, literally knocked my socks off, very well-educated, knows the position well, and highly recommended by John Reinhardt. And if anyone knows who John Reinhardt is, he's probably one of the better, best CFOs out there, and highly, he's highly regarded, so he gave her a really great recommendation.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, John Reinhardt teaches all of the CMFOs, the classes, to get certified. So he has a better understanding than just about anybody of who's doing well and who will do well. And he's also a current CFO of Bergen County, too, so he lives it as well. The 2025 Request for Qualifications, Request for Proposals are out and on the website. They're due back November 15th. Hopefully, we'll get a robust collection of proposals and qualifications. Met this week with Morris County. Morris County is developing a local safety action plan. It takes a look at safety concerns on roads in the county's 39 municipalities. We had a meeting this week, it was group meeting number two, it was online. The NJTPA is putting together the study for them, so if you, it's really important for Parsippany residents to get involved and go to the site. It's morris.safetyplansj.com, morris.safetyplansj.com, to participate in a survey and the web mapping activity. Excuse me. So you can take a survey of what you think the biggest issues are, and you can map areas of concern that you've seen. During this last meeting, they talked about all of the pins that were dropped in Florham Park and Morristown, pretty much saying that people, residents of Morristown and Florham Park had done the most, participated the most. So it's really important that Parsippany do that, too, because our roads are dangerous, and it's really important to have the opportunity to have some grant funding brought back here to fix some of the problems that we are experiencing. And that's all I have. Thank you, Council President.
Moving along to ordinances. The ordinances will be voted on at the next meeting with the exception of ordinance 2024-18, which is the ordinance to the township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, and the county of Morristown, New Jersey, providing for a special emergency appropriation, the amount of $1,255,000 to fund contractually required severance liabilities resulting from the layoff or retirement of employees of the township, be it resolved at the above ordinance being introduced, had by title and passed on first reading and a meeting of the township council, the township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held on November 12th. And that said, ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 3rd, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached. At the municipal building and set township, at which time, all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mysella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving along to non-consent agenda. R2024-178 granting a soil moving permit to Onyx Properties, Block 202, Lot 3.10. Motion to approve resolution above?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Mysella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R2024-189 authorizing the purchase of Open Gov Asset Management Softwear. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Mysella, seconded by Mr., was that, Mr. Neglia?
Somebody spoke up.
I spoke the same, we spoke the same. Yeah, I'll second it.
Mr. Neglia, roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R2024-181 consenting to the appointment of the Director of Finance and Chief Financial Officer of the township of Parsippany, Troy Hills. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R2024-181 consenting to the appointment of the Director of Finance and Chief Financial Officer of the township of Parsippany, Troy Hills. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R2024-181 consenting to the appointment of the Director of Finance and Chief Financial Officer of the township of Parsippany, Troy Hills. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion. Make a motion, second?
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Mysella. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Mysella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
We're adjourned, have a good night, everybody.
Morris County Service.
Yes, yes.
When does she, you know, when she starts?